Alright, I would like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Board of Trustees to order. It is Monday, July 6th, it is 6:31 on my watch. We are holding a Zoom meeting and due to the COVID pandemic, this is being recorded, so all chats, all video will be recorded for capturing. And again, if the public or anyone wants to join, feel free to do. You can see the top of the agenda, you can join either by tablet, computer, via the Zoom link, or just audio via your cellphone, and there's a number there as well. So we'll determine if we have a quorum, so Lisa, you want to take roll call, please?
Sure. Alan?
Present.
Limburg?
Present.
Murphy?
Present.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Valencia?
Not hearing.
Vanderweldy, I believe is absent. Williams? Can you hear me, John?
Alright, I'm gonna try to jump off and jump back on, apparently I can't hear anybody. So maybe you want a sound check real quick?
I can hear you, John.
Alright, I can now.
Okay.
Operator, operator.
We have a quorum.
Alright, thank you. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. So sign the flag if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The States of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We move on then to item four, is public appearances. Public's opportunity to speak at our board meeting on any topic that is in the agenda or any other topic, so we'll pause for a bit and allow anybody to jump in. We won't see anybody from, other than those staff members and board members, but we'll just give a moment. Alright, moving then on to item five, that is discussed and considered in meeting minutes from our board meeting on June 15th. Are there any edits or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, then motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Then we move on to item six, unfinished business, the first one is 6A. Discuss the village board list of priorities, there's a memo in the packet from Matt, as well as a score sheet from all of our ratings. Matt, do you want to cover anything here?
Sure, the spreadsheet, I realize when I, when you click on the link, it's rather small. I don't know if you guys were able to enhance that at all, I can try sharing my screen and see if that, if it shows up any more clear.
Now you're just trying to give us an eye chart, that's all, to make sure we're all good, right?
Yeah. Did anyone have troubles making it out, or did maybe somebody printed it, I'm not sure?
It prints out fine, I printed it out just to look at it.
Okay.
From my perspective, so I'm assuming board members were able to look at it.
Yeah, I added one additional column this year, just to show if a particular item was ranked last year and where it was ranked, so that that can be found on the far right side of the spreadsheet. So just, there can be just a general discussion, if anyone wants to talk about anything specifically, that can be done, otherwise, you know, multiple board members could have these topics discussed in more, in more detail, we get, you know, any more specifics, if we want to do that at future meetings. Otherwise, you know, staff will certainly take these priorities into account when making budget proposals, as well as during, when we establish our performance goals, so.
Alright, thanks Matt, any items that board members would like to discuss? I think there's a, at least when I look at this, there's a clear cut after the kind of the top seven. A number of them are bunched in with economic development being certainly far outweighing the others, but the rest of them are very tight in that bunch, so probably certainly worth considering as we go through priorities from budgeting, as well as to, as Matt said, staff goals.
John, can I say something?
Absolutely, Melissa.
Um, last year, I think Matt had gone through maybe one per week or month per meeting to give us an overview of what was being worked on, or how we could move forward on these things. And I found that helpful, and I think it kind of gave us an idea of what exactly we were doing to move those things along, such as, like with facilities planning, we were able to put that in the budget for next year, and we talked about what we kind of wanted, or with the housing and doing the task force. And I would be interested in doing that again this year, just so that, like the top four, five, just so that we can understand what we all meant by our priorities that we listed, and staff can be on the same page as us as well.
That's fine with me, I don't know if other board members have an opinion either way. I would suggest that we probably do a couple, two or three at each meeting, just to be able to get them in before we kind of start that budget discussion, which is fast approaching. I think we start probably late August, somewhere in there, I believe.
I have a tendency to agree with Melissa and you, John, it would be nice to do what we did last year, go through, you know, where are we at on things, what we can do to continue. I do want to make an apology, I must not have read, just want to make it public, but I must not have read all the way through, right? I would have put, probably taken three away from my ten on economic development, and put it down in equity, inclusivity, and race, I did not catch that one, so I apologize for that publicly.
And that's, I think Jeff, it's still, it's still definitely in the mix as far as top, even moving that. So I think we're in the right direction for a majority of the board, for those top four or five, certainly across the board, so yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to go through that.
Okay.
Again, with you guys, and maybe looking at the, at the rankings, and if we do a couple, you know, maybe two at each meeting, like you were suggesting, John. And we could go further, but, and I think last year, like you said Melissa, maybe it was the top four. Just kind of looking at how closely bunched these are, maybe we go to item six, housing. There's a bit of a drop off after that. If everyone's okay with that. So if I can, if I remember correctly, basically we were, I was putting together a memo that showed maybe any existing goals that are either part of my goals or other department head goals that are related to these items, and then we just kind of have a general discussion, and board members give their feedback, and we can do that, certainly.
That sounds really good, Matt.
Okay.
Um, I did want to mention something about equity, inclusivity, and race. It's, a lot of the other priorities, we kind of already have something started on them, so it's, those are kind of updates, or we already have a committee that works toward that. In my priorities for that topic, I suggested starting an ad hoc committee that could work on community outreach, and perhaps some kind of open discussion, or, you know, engage with community on that topic. So I don't know if we, where we want to put that in order, since it's kind of a new thing, where the others are sort of ongoing updates of things we're already doing. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that?
We couldn't make that the first one we discuss, since it is new. Like you said, the other priority stuff that we, it's very similar to what we had on there last year, and something like that might be good to put up in the forefront, that'd be my, my opinion.
I think so as well.
Okay, we can prioritize that in the first batch, next meeting, I think. And Matt and I can kind of sort out the order then from there. Because it is brand new, and it's something that we don't have, you know, a lot going on around that, so certainly that's a, that's a good one to chew on, I think, for the board. Any other comments about priorities? I think just a general comment, unfortunately Paul wasn't able to make it today, he's got a conflict, but and I would say this to him, is this is, and I did say this to him when I met with him, this is a nice way for us to kind of kick off our budget discussions and our goals for, for staff. So Matt's kind of led the charge, maybe three or four years ago now, in this effort, and I think for, for us as a board, it does help having this in place for having, what will be probably some challenging discussions when we look at, you know, whatever the budget's going to look like next year with all this pandemic thing going on. And also kind of weighs things out too, and we can do a lot, you know, stretch, stretch the dower as, as one would say, being smart about it, so just want to make that quick comment on that. If there are any more comments, then we'll move on with, with that recommendation, add it to the agenda for next time, and then proceed from there, starting with inclusivity and diversity. Item B is then to consider the emergency preparedness plan. Matt has, Lieutenant Wagner has a, Lieutenant Wagner has a memo in the packet, and we've had, we have multiple versions of, of the plan floating around, but that's why I think Matt clearly said in here, it is a draft, a living document. And if we can proceed with this, perhaps maybe want to look at a near term review, rather than kind of an annual review for this first, for this first year perhaps. But Matt, I'll let you take it away.
Well, yeah, as John said, with Rick's help in the last week, he and I have emailed this document back and forth several times. We got some feedback from a village board member, so we made some adjustments even into today. We emailed that out to Lisa, who I'm assuming emailed everyone the newer version. So yeah, I mean, this is an extensive plan that will follow, or where we follow accordance with state law, and it puts us into compliance. You know, as the memo states in the, I'm trying to share my screen here, bear with me, I'm not as good as Matt and Sean.
Well, Lisa couldn't find the volume button for your speakers, like I did earlier.
Excuse me, so we've updated the plan, got some of the issues solved, Melissa, when it comes to the page numbers, and some of the formatting, Kelly took care of that for me today. She's a Microsoft Word expert, so going through the plan, we don't have to go through it page by page, but it's very extensive, it gets very detailed on what everyone's jobs are when it comes to village employees, what everyone's powers are when it comes to John being the village president, and then having the village board when it comes to voting. Just gets into, involved into what the department heads' jobs and functions are. Every department head has seen this document, so they're well aware for their department what is expected of them. And then we get into when it comes down to the committee portion of it. And as of right now, we have a joint committee with the town of Cottage Grove, and I know Rick and Larry have put together two possible proposals to the change of our ordinance in discussion with staff. We're proposing that we go as a standalone committee, or a village only emergency committee for many reasons, but one of the main reasons being that in a time of crisis, we don't want a political issue to arise on who's in charge and who's not in charge, taking away from the actual event themselves, and the, the goals that are at hand for the departments that are dealing with the crisis. It just makes it a little bit smoother when it comes to the liability for the village. Yeah, and like I said, the plan is very, is detailed, we have, I don't know, I've looked at this document for hours on end, are there any specific questions that I can answer, instead of just trying to ramble on?
First of all, certainly appreciate your efforts, Matt, and I'm trying to coordinate, take a lead on this, this is no small task, for sure. And as I said earlier, drafts, I think we can continue to make improvements on it, but we're definitely huge steps and strides ahead of where we were, you know, three months ago, without a plan, or a plan that was jointly somewhat shared with the town, but didn't address some bigger issues with assistance of living facilities and some other things that Sarah brought up and her concerns initially, which kind of kicked all this off. So with that, certainly we have to discuss the, the two different versions of the ordinance, the plan overall, we'll start, we'll start with a plan for board members, if they have any comments, with the latest version that has been sent out.
I think I don't really have any questions, but I have a comment, I really appreciate your work on this, Matt, it's really impressive. And even if I went on the board as a village resident, I'd feel a lot more comfortable with what we've got here than what we used to have, where it just felt like you were shooting by the hip. And I really appreciate that, so as I read through it, I was like, okay, wow, alright, good. Because it looks like everything was thought through very carefully, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or feedback from board members?
Um, I had one, as far as if we don't have a joint committee, are we still going to be able to meet at town, at the emergency services building?
Matt and I discussed that actually earlier today. We don't, I'm not sure we want to, we probably want to designate multiple spots for potential gathering. There may be certain situations where we don't have to meet, we can meet like this. An example of, you know, we have a, with the COVID-19 situation right now, there may be designated spots, whether it's EOC or wherever, where we cannot go there, maybe because the building is damaged. So my preference, and for the board to consider, would be having, you know, at least three spots designated, and just a way of doing that, rather than saying it's that particular spot, that's just my thoughts.
That makes sense, I just asked that because it is noted in the, in the plan to meet at, maybe not the committee, but that's where the EOC is. And then my other thing is, that in the new plan, it states his and her. His, her, his slash her, and I would feel better if it, and feel that it was more inclusive if it stated their T H E I R and them were appropriate, just so that we aren't excluding anyone that doesn't, uh, doesn't go by he or him, or she or her.
I think that's pretty easy, global change, I think that could be done with the, with the word software, word document, that's pretty easy, I think, change to do, and unless anybody has a strong opinion, otherwise it's, I think that's fine.
And just, yeah, that's an easy fix, John, and then for the first part, the EOC, the reason why the, the fire department is listed as it right now is because that's what's currently established as the Cottage Grove EOC. So if we change that, that'll be an easy fix, but that's why in the plan currently, the town, or excuse me, the, the fire department is, is listed, because that's what we currently are calling the EOC.
Okay.
And Lieutenant Wagner, this is Sarah, when you and I had talked for a while, a while back, there didn't seem to be any piece of equipment necessarily in the current EOC that you felt wasn't accessible in another way, did I summarize that right? Is there anything in that current space that you feel like would be critical either, if we're not in that space, that we duplicate somewhere else, or move, or for a reason to be joint? Thoughts on that?
Well, the, the way that the EOC is set up, and I don't know how many have been down into it, you know, basically, the, the basics of it are having a communication system, i.e. phones, cell phones, and then also radio system that emergency, or that we use, police radio, fire radio, EMS radio. Municipal Services Building has all the exact same capabilities that the EOC has now. There's an easier, or an easier way that I could set up, you know, a small kit, you know, an emergency management kit, that could be easily, you know, prepared and set aside, so if something does happen, all we have to do is grab it, and we can set it up basically anywhere when it comes to Village Hall, when it comes to the MSP, if it, you know, if, if we have to go over the piggly wiggly and use that as our EOC. I mean, we can, we can use that kit to be able to function properly as an EOC. It'd be nice to have, you know, like what we have at the fire department, in a nice central location that has everything inside of it, but as John mentioned before, you know, if we're dealing with a crisis right in front of the, you know, fire department, that, that building is going to be out of commission, so we're going to have to be flexible anyway, so. To answer your question, yes, I mean, we do have the capability of having all the same equipment that's downstairs, in a mobile EOC, so we could have it wherever we need it.
And, and we also felt, as, as staff, from experiencing the EOC being down in that basement, it can get rather cramped, and depending on the emergency and amount of people down there. For instance, the meeting space at the Municipal Services Building, if we reconfigured that, depending on the emergency, to be the EOC, as an example, that would be another route to go.
My only comment about just the kits, which I think is a great idea, Lieutenant Wagner, it would be that we have kits, not just one, and we have them at different locations, you know, two, three, whatever it is, you know, you have the central, we figure out what central location, EOC building, municipal building, Village Hall, whatever, that's probably got a more extensive thing, and then the kits are elsewhere. So that if again, we're off limits to that location, we've got another location to grab the kit to go wherever we need to, to take action, so that would be my only thought on that.
Yeah, and again, very, very easily obtainable, the only thing that, you know, that I would suggest is I just need power, so I can, you know, plug in a radio charger, so we always have a radio at 100%, but I mean, we can use anything from the well locations, to, like I said, Village Hall, to, you know, just, I can hide one in the ground in the backwoods behind Heidi's house or something, that's, that's completely fine with me, but yeah, absolutely.
It may not be fine with her, though.
Yeah, she'll know where it's at, and then she'll be the first one that can, can respond to the emergency.
There aren't too many woods over here yet, so.
But I did wanna just comment quickly, Lieutenant Wagner, I think that I appreciate all of your work on this. It's a very thorough document. And I think Jeff made a good point as a resident, um, you know, I. I like seeing the plan, um, written out and ready to be activated if needed, um. And these are good, like, I like the multiple packs and multiple E O C sites, mobile. Um, one question I did have about the joint committee is about emergency exercises. Are those usually coordinated from the county or state and then they coordinate multiple governments? Or how does that work?
Uh, well, the nice thing about, uh, exercises is, um, any size agency can put it on. So if we wanted to put one on as a, as a village. We absolutely could do that and be the, uh, the head department or head agency for that. Uh, I would definitely have, you know, Dane County Emergency Management, neither Wisconsin Emergency Management involved in it. Because a lot of times they have grants every year, uh, that we can actually tap into and, and use the funding to do an exercise like that. Um, just because we would be a village-owned committee doesn't mean that we're not going to be in partnership with the township. Um, you know, if we do do an exercise like this, I mean, we would. More than likely invite them to be a part of our exercise because we still use a joint, um, you know, EMS service. We still use a joint fire service. Uh, so, and we're all still one community when it comes to, you know, being Cottage Grove. Um, so yeah, to answer your question, I mean, we can do one on our own, uh, yearly or annually. We'd probably. Do a, a small tabletop anyway, just to kind of keep everyone refreshed with. Uh, I C S and, and, you know, having to go through that. And as the years go on and we get a little bit more. A little bit more experienced with it, then we can, uh, you know, start doing a little bit more, uh, exercises when it comes to actual. You know, hands-on type exercises. So, and I do wanna say, uh, I, I do appreciate everyone saying that it's a good point, but, um. I wasn't the only one that made this plan. Um, I, I have a, a very good team when it comes to the department heads. Uh, chief labor, chief, chief labor and, uh, Matt, um, you know, really helped with this plan. So all the accolades, you know. Aren't, aren't to me, they're, they're definitely for the entire staff that has their hands in this.
All right.
Uh, I think everybody, I think everybody did a great job as well. I, I have a couple of questions, uh. Presuming, uh, it sounds like the direction that is being recommended is to have a separate. Village, uh, emergency government committee. What about existing equipment? Would that be, you know, split? They bought new cell phones, they bought new computers, that kind of stuff. How would that work?
Well, I can start with this one at least, uh, Troy. I would, if, if we did separate, then we would, you know, certainly separate the assets too. And close that out. Uh, there is some funds in the emergency joint committee. Uh, right now, I think ma- main contributor that's been high rate, uh, we, we certainly split those. I, I did mention this to. Uh, Chris Hampton a while ago, uh, depending on the direction that the board wanted to go here. Uh, and, and he understands that's, you know, that's the way it would, would work. Uh, or if we stayed somewhat partially together. Um, then maybe we don't liquidate all those, those assets. I, you know, and I say liquidate, probably what it is. Some cell phones go here, some cell phones go there, that type of thing, but, um, I think there's some, some laptops too that are, uh, uh, existing too. And that you'll see that are related to emergency government. Um, so I think that's how we would handle it if, if we split off totally.
Okay, all right. And, and, and I guess, uh, how does this work if there's a? A natural disaster that would affect both the village and town with one fire department, uh, what is the directive there? And, and EMS, one EMS and one fire department that we have, which is joint.
Again, just, uh, sorry, I understand your question, right, Troy? So you're, you're asking what? What would happen if there was a, a larger event that's, um, encompasses the village and the township? How is the fire department and Deer Grove EMS going to split their services?
Yeah, basically, um, I, I, I think that could be room for a debate down the road. If there is something and someone says, well, they spent more time in the village than in the town or vice versa. Uh, it, it could be a political issue, I, 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 I'm guessing, uh, maybe not.
Yeah, and I can, um, you know, rest assured when it comes to the ac- actual situation itself, um, you know. All of our agencies, law enforcement agencies, EMS agencies and fire agencies all have, uh, mutually agreements with. Uh, everyone inside of Dane County and even the surrounding counties. Um, so when it comes to the services themselves, um, I don't think it's going to. Uh, uh, you know, I don't, I don't see any services being, well, that's township or that's village. I mean, they're gonna take care of the issue at hand. Um, and then this plan, uh, is just basically for, uh, again, kind of what we're doing now with the pandemic if. Um, you know, there is funding that we can get reimbursed for down the road, um, you know, we'll take care of the village side of it. And then the other municipalities will have to take care of themselves.
And maybe one point of clarification too is that. Focus on the scene, the first responders on the scene are incident command, not emergency government. And so incident command, that's, um, I guess. E O C or emergency operations is not telling incident command what to do. Incident command is figuring that out. They're the first responders. They're, they're figuring it out amongst themselves. Emergency operations is there to support, help, get them what they need, but not there to tell them what to do. So if, if at incident command, it's determined that they need to send this fire truck here, there, the other way. It's, it has nothing to do with the emergency operations. It has everything to do with first responders on the scene, incident commands.
Yeah, and I can tell you that if we're dealing with a larger crisis that it encompasses, encompasses more than one municipality. Um, Cottage Grove E O C isn't gonna be alone. Uh, Dane County, you, or Dane County Emergency Management's gonna get involved. Uh, Wisconsin Emergency Management's also gonna get involved. Um, so it's not like we're gonna be left out here. Uh, but you, Sarah, you're right. I mean, the incident command is taking care of the issues at hand. And the emergency operation center is basically, uh, in the back, getting the incident command and, and the troops up front, the, uh, equipment, the people. And whatever they need to, uh, to take, take care of the job.
Troy, does that kind of address your question?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Uh, any other comments or further discussion about the plan itself?
Can I make a motion to approve the emergency preparedness plan?
You certainly can. Is there a second? Oh, second. All right. Second, second. Any further discussion?
Just had a quick question. How frequently do we need to bring this plan back if Lieutenant Wagner and the team feels like some changes need to happen? Does it have to come back always to the board or, um, is there an annual kind of review of it?
Well, I have it on my desktop, so I've been reviewing it daily at this point. Um, but no, we could definitely, uh, you know, I will, uh, you know, cause one of. Um, you know, trustee Ratcliffe's question was, you know, with the twenty twenty census, uh, we're gonna have different population numbers. And our village attributes and everything are going to change. So, um, yeah, I, I will, like, uh. You know, President Williams said this is a living, breathing document, so definitely, uh, maintain it and, and keep it up to date. And then if there's anything of substance that we really need to, uh, change, then, you know, I can definitely. Uh, pull the committee together, we can discuss it, and then if we need to, we can bring it in front of the entire village board.
That sounds great. Thank you.
And I assume that any, if we have any tabletop exercise or any other exercise, we would adjust from there from the lessons learned. That occurred from that particular exercise or tabletop as well. Um, and I would anticipate this is an annual, a minimum annual review and probably will, will kick at it, uh, a lot more this first year. Either through the committee or through Lieutenant Wagner or others. So, um, I think. At least having a document there and, and starting with it and the, and certainly the, there's a motion and second on the floor to, to approve it. And then we can go there and, and tweaking it going forward. Any further discussion from board members? All right, having heard none and all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Now, I think the second part of this, uh. Lieutenant Wagner already mentioned was just how to handle the ordinance. And there are two versions as noted in his memo. With a recommendation, um, too. So essentially, they're identical with the exception, I think, with, I think option B. And noted that we would still have the, hold the joint emergency committee and, and, uh, work with the town on that. Uh, is the only difference, I, I believe, as noted.
Yeah, and I'll defer to, uh, this was Rick's ex- expertise, so I'll let him take over now.
Okay.
So, uh, I have a ten month old in the background, so I apologize if you hear that. Um, so the ordinance is. Uh, basically they make a couple of, well, not a couple, they make a few changes to bring. The chapter thirty-six, which is your emergency government code, that brings it more in line with the plan that was just approved. So one thing that, uh, for example, that we try to do is rather than handcuffing government officials. We act, now that ordinance act as an authorization, rather than saying that you shall do something, it allows government officials to take certain action. It creates the two committee options like we talked about, and that's sort of the, that's the only difference between the two ordinances. So one, uh, eliminates the joint emergency committee between the village and town. Instead goes with the emergency preparedness and mobilization committee structure that's described in the emergency plan. The other option for the ordinance, option B, it would maintain the emergency, the joint emergency committee. But restructure what its actual authority is. So the main, um, emergency planning and advising. Authority would rest with the village, uh, preparedness and mobilization committee. The joint emergency committee would be more or less. An organization that's existing between the two, the village and town and it. The whole purpose of it would just be any sort of, any sort of joint operations that could occur between the village and town. So it's still maintaining that, uh, the joint status with the town, not completely removing it, just sort of. Reformatting the purpose of the committee on the village's side of things. And again, granting it more autonomy to handle its own emergency planning and coordination. Other than that, the, like I said, the ordinance, there are some technical fixes and, uh, just making it more of an authorization. Rather than, um. You know, a shall document, I should say.
Okay.
I think that covers it.
Okay, um. So even, even just, uh, with option A, there's no, just like we occasionally meet with the town. Um, supervisors and their board. Uh, it would certainly, we could do the same thing with, with, with their emergency. Um, or that they have to, if we're gonna do a, an exercise jointly, you know, in three months or whatever. So I'm, I'm trying to think why there would be an advantage to having the joint one in place. In addition to, cause you're gonna have two committees. And they're gonna have, they're gonna have a, a committee and a joint as well.
So I, I did take a peek at the town's ordinances. Their joint committee is the only one they have.
Okay.
Presumably they might create another committee, depending on what the village does or reformat their ordinances. Um, that, we wanted to provide the board with options just because, you know, the town. Also finds out that the village is backing out all of a sudden, it might come as a shock to them. But, um. This at least maintains that relationship with the town.
Uh, other thoughts or questions from board members?
Um, when I was reading through both options, um, compared to our current. Um, E E, emergency government committee, the school, somebody from the school isn't included in the committee. And I was wondering if, um, we should, or if there was a reason why that wasn't done.
Uh, when I drafted the orden, or the committee makeup, it was based on what was in the emergency preparedness plan. So I missed that one, I apologize, but that is, uh. You know, obviously a policy decision, and if the board wants to include that, uh, we could make that a quick fix.
I think it's just, you know, important to remember the difference between what the committee is and doing a tabletop exercise. And we would definitely, if the school were to be involved in whatever the situation where the exercise were on, definitely involve them. Um, I'm not sure that they need to be coming to every committee meeting, uh, but I'll listen to other board members that they have different thoughts. But, um, that's my opinion is we will engage who we need to for. Emergency table or the tabletop exercises.
So would this committee just basically meet every now and then for like a month or two to set up a tabletop? Exercise maybe once a year or what? Like, cause the previous one was meeting once a month, but do, is how it's going to be set up now? Different than that?
Well, I mean, I, if, to be honest with you, Melissa, I don't think we would need to meet on a monthly basis. Um, you know, I mean, we can meet on a quarterly basis just on regular, you know, regular business if, uh, things are coming up. Or have come up in the last quarter. Um, and then as we get closer and more prepared to do, you know, exercises, then we could definitely. You know, pick up the frequency of, of when we're meeting and how we're meeting. And again, um, you know, just because we're. A village-owned committee doesn't mean that, um, we're not gonna invite all the entities that are gonna be involved. Uh, or that possibly could be involved, or even just wants, wants to sit on the sidelines and, and observe. Um, you know, we're, we're gonna invite whoever wants to come and be a part of it, uh, cause the more practice we do at this. Um, you know, the better off we're going to be, you know, God forbid it, we ever have to really do put it into, into play.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear all of, um, all that information. And I don't think that we need the school reps specifically in the ordinance then either.
Yeah, and, and the nice thing is, uh, you know, when it comes to the school, we do have the S R O, so, um, you know, I, Jess will. Always be involved in, um, you know, P D operations, so she'll know what's going on. And, uh, she's got her connections up at, at G D S and, and through the, uh, you know, through the school district. So if something does come up. Um, you know, like I said, the, the school will be more than, more than welcome, and they'll definitely be invited with open arms to, uh, to assist and, and give their feedback. Where we need it.
Um, I just wanted to point out briefly that we have a lot of land that's surrounded by Town of Sun Prairie now also. And so we're not specifically engaging them in a joint committee. Um, but of course, like all these other entities we're talking about, they would then be invited. So I don't. I don't see why there would be. A difference in how we're treating Town of Sun Prairie versus Town of Cottage Grove when we'd invite them to exercising us.
Well, absolutely, I agree. Uh, and I, and again, that's, you know, uh, as you see, when, when the fire department does a burn. Um, it's not just Cottage Grove Fire that's out there. I mean, they use that, that training, uh. For anyone and everyone that can come and be a part of it. And that's the same thing when it comes to, uh, emergency management and emergency operations. I mean, we can set it up, we can be the host, but that doesn't mean that, um, you know, other municipalities that are close by. Uh, even municipalities that aren't close by that wanna come down and at least observe or, or be a part of it. Um, you know, again, the, the more minds and the more people that we have there, the better off it's gonna make us. Uh, when it comes to the exercise, we'll have a lot more lessons learned. Um, and then vice versa, I mean, we can give some of our, uh, input. To other municipalities, uh, that are kind of in the same process that we are right now. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's not a closed door. It's, it's an open door policy to, to all townships, all, you know, municipalities close by. to all townships, all, you know, municipalities close by that's, um, you know, we're, we're open to help and we wanna learn and, and we wanna teach at the same time.
And if I remember correctly, one of the, one of the exercises that we did, um, City of Madison was invited, their hazmat team came to at least one of them, if not, if not two, so City of Madison's been involved too.
All right, any other thoughts from board members, uh, regarding the ordinances or, or questions?
Would this committee be considered a committee of the board? Given that it, so many of the members are directors of the different departments, or is it more of a, um, like a staff committee? Maybe it doesn't matter how it's referred to.
I mean, it's, it's more created, so it's, it's only planning an advisory committee, so it's main function is to provide recommendations to the board. Uh, so technically a creature of the board, or a committee of the board, but it's, um, you know, like you said, it's gonna have more committee members than your typical, or more staff members or civilian members than your typical, uh, village board, I would say.
Thanks, Rick, for that. Any other questions or comments? Anybody have a feeling either way on, on which option to go?
I make a motion to approve option A of having, um, the, well, what's the, maybe say option A, let's see. That has one village emergency preparedness and mobilization committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Sarah, you're voting for the joint committee?
No, no, no. Isn't that option, option A, just the, the village emergency preparedness and mobilization committee? Did I get my options wrong?
No, that's option A.
Okay.
Let's just make this chart.
Okay. Yeah, so option A creates the emergency preparedness and mobilization committee and eliminates the joint emergency committee.
And as been discussed, that doesn't mean we don't work together on joint efforts or whatever, it's just, uh, making it very clear in that option.
Uh, if I could just add one quick thing, I noticed that there's something that we need to just do a quick correction on. In section thirty-six, three A, there's, what it's supposed to say is that the village, uh, president is supposed to be the, chair of the committee until there's a director appointed. Uh, it's not clear, so we just need to make a quick clarification there, so if you just approve it with the, the motion to, or make the motion to approve subject to changing thirty-six, three A to, uh, make clear the appointment process for the director and of emergency government and chair of the Preparedness and Mobilization Committee.
Do we have to go back and reappoint Lieutenant Wagner? Cause we already picked him, no?
No, this is just a, a clarification going forward.
So are you okay with that?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
We have a second, or who has a second?
Uh, I don't think we had a second, let's. So we've got Heidi has a second. And you're okay with that clarification to Heidi, right? Okay. Uh, all right, then any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right, then we move on to, um, actually new business, come to the ordinance. Uh, A, item A is discuss and consider the revised operator license application. Lisa, any comments on this, or?
I can take over unless Lisa wants to say anything. So, uh, based on some discussions that have occurred regarding the operator licenses, uh, in the application process and, uh, like the board is aware of the new law changes, we wanted to bring the application more in line with state law. Uh, so you've got two versions that you can review. One is a redline version showing the changes that were made, and the other is a clean copy. Uh, essentially, we wanted to remove any sort of references to prior arrests or charges and focus solely on convictions. Uh, removed a few other things from the application that weren't really relevant anymore. Uh, but otherwise, this revised application is, uh, it's not gonna put any information that's irrelevant in front of the committee, or the board, I should say.
Okay. Um, we had, we did have just got, uh, an extensive discussion about this in prior meeting. Um, which is why Rick is, is, uh, done, what is done, um, any questions or comments from board members?
I do have one quick question. Um, driver's license number is on there, which I'm assuming helps with the background check, but is a driver's license required to hold an operator's license, or can someone like walk to work and not have a valid driver's license, or, you know, they don't even have a license?
No, it's not a requirement or anything. It's just a, another form of identification.
Sure, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, do we have to have sex and race on there as well? Like, is that just for background check purposes, otherwise, or what?
Yeah, we, we need that for background check because sometimes it's pretty hard to figure out who someone is if we don't have that information. So, there's a lot of people, last name is Smith out there, and sometimes we need to narrow it down.
I'm with Brian Murphy, so he gets an extra guy, other Brian Murphy.
Yes.
Um, my other question is, do we, is there a reason to limit this to, um, Cottage Grove ordinances? Um, uh, I guess it would be question three.
Yes, so there have been cases and, um, there's state law that says you can't withhold, um, a license based on unpaid forfeitures or fines or ordinances, or for state law violations, or, um, basically it has to be some, they have to have violated a Village of Cottage Grove ordinance and have an unpaid forfeiture amount, so it really can't be more expansive than that.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
Is this the way the formatting is gonna stay? Or is it gonna be fixed a little bit?
Uh, we can make it look prettier. It was, uh, Lisa commented that it was, so she provided me a publisher version of it, it was very old, so we-
I'm just looking at where it says previous names, and it's like you could only fit Smith in there maybe, and no other hard names. All right. Um, I will make a motion to approve the revised operator license application then.
Okay, and that's second by Sarah. Um, any further discussion then? All right, having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right, then we move on to, uh, discuss and consider resolution twenty, twenty dash oh eight regarding liquor license approval policy.
I can take this one again, so-
It's the Rick show tonight.
Yeah. So, again, based on previous conversations that we've had, we wanted to bring the village's approval policy into compliance with state law. Uh, biggest issue before was the, uh, policy allowed consideration of prior charges. So we removed that and, uh, just made the policy overall more consistent with state law. Um, put explicitly in there that if the board wanted to, it could deny a license based on somebody providing false information on the application. Uh, that's obviously a policy decision for the board to make if they wanna include that. But overall, again, just trying to bring things into conformance with state law, um, and the one thing, I guess I would note going forward, uh, it's not explicitly stated in there, but when the background checks are performed, uh, only conviction should be brought forward, I suppose, uh, not any prior charges that were dismissed or found not guilty of, it should just be conviction, so when the background check is performed, uh, just going forward, the board should only be considering convictions and not have other information in front of it.
Um, Chief Labor, any, any process issues with that? Um, obviously if they redact or remove those, does it cause, you know, it's gonna be a little more work, obviously, but-
No, it should be fine, I don't see any problem with the revised revisions on there.
Okay. I just wanted to do a quick process check, thank you. Other comments from board members?
Just wanna say thank you, Rick, this is, I think, going to be helpful, changes in guidance.
Uh, be of service.
All right, then is there a motion to approve, cause it's a discuss and consider?
I'll move approval of regulation number twenty twenty dash eight, uh, Village of Cottage Grove Guidelines for Issuance of Alcohol Beverage Licenses.
Is there a second? Motion second, okay, thank you, Trey. All right, uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right, let's see then, is discuss and consider the Wisconsin Election Committee CARES subgrant. Um, I think Lisa had a, um, number in the packet. Is that correct?
Yep, you did, um, so it's pretty straightforward, um, Rick reviewed, um, the grant and put his stamp of approval on it. Um, so it's pretty straightforward, it basically is going to give us approximately five thousand dollars, which will be eaten up in postage, um, probably in August. Um, as of today, we've issued one thousand one hundred and eighty absentee ballots for the, um, August uh, primary. So, it doesn't take long at a dollar fifteen, uh, ballot to eat that up. Um, but while we're of the reporting practices that we're in there of what we'll need to do, it's basically submitting our expenses, um, to the state, um, for, um, the ways that we will be using this, if we don't, um, use it, then we have to return it, um, like I said, we won't have a power of using it because our postage is way over that right now, so, um, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I do. How many registered voters do, does Cottage Grove have?
Hmm, you know what, I was going to look at that, um, earlier and I only pulled up the, uh, the absentee, I would send it out in the email, I'm going to guess that it's going to be right in the neighborhood of about forty-two hundred, maybe forty-three hundred, but I will get the exact number, I would pull it up right now, but I gotta put in my key fob and go through my whole login process, so it takes longer than what you wanna wait, so I will send it out to everybody.
You, how many people do you think live here that aren't registered to the vote?
Um, it's always in our estimate of our population of what the, um, how many of our pop, or voting age. Um, I would say if I had to guess, and this is totally just guessing off the top of my head, that we're in the high, probably eighty to eighty-five percent, um, just basing that nearly off of our turnout of voters versus registered voters. We have voters in Cottage Grove, we do very well.
But if we had all of them registered, then we'd get more money?
We would in this, um, in this grant, and this is, you know, mainly because of the, the circumstance that we're in, this isn't the normal, I mean, they normally don't provide any funding, so.
So where is the money coming from then, once we run out of this grant?
Um, well, we obviously had a budget, um, each year for elections, and obviously we amped that up, um, during a presidential because we anticipate the larger volume of, um, voters, so, um, it, it's in our, our annual budget, um, to cover. Um, obviously, we didn't anticipate when we budgeted what was going to hit us in April going forward, um, with the amount of absentees, and therefore, I mean, as we're aware, in other areas where that CARES subgrant is coming in from the state to help offset those costs.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, any other discussion or questions? Otherwise, this is a discuss and consider whether or not we, we, uh, submit for the, the subgrant, so then look for a motion if, if that's, uh, the board chooses.
I'll make the motion to approve the, um, W E C CARES Act subgrant.
All right, is there-
I'll second, this is Sarah.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Uh, any further discussion?
Quick addition, John, I couldn't, I didn't speak up quick enough, but, um, in addition to, um, in Melissa's question and what Lisa was saying is that as well, we'll be applying, um, to FEMA and other grants to cover overages regarding the pandemic and the election, so, um, anything we go over on that's also not funded through FEMA, um, ultimately then we just look for cut, hopefully cutbacks on other areas of the budget to make room for elections this year, and we don't think that will be a problem.
All right, thanks, Matt, for the clarification, I know Department Head's been, uh, filling out a spreadsheet pass back and forth through Lieutenant Wagner, so, um, I appreciate all of that. All right, we have a motion and second then, any further discussion? Uh, having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right, then we move on to discussing, or I'm sorry, the annual review for, uh, village consultants, this is, uh, first up from, uh, our attorney in Stafford and Rosemount. Um, I'm assuming Larry, you're gonna take this, or?
I have to do something tonight, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, Rick's, Rick's doing a lot of work, okay? So, yeah.
He's doing a lot of work. Um, we had, uh, we, we, we did ask, uh, Matt mentioned in the email that we met last week, we asked, uh, Matt and I have been talking about this for a while, uh, we wanted to get, uh, like a six month, around a six month, um, review since we just started, uh, working through the village this, this year. Uh, just to have a, a mid course, at least for this year, evaluation and, uh, sort of talk about, uh, what we've been doing and, and what, if anything, maybe would like to see done differently, or, uh, or, or, or any changes that they'd like to see to how we're, we're operating. It was an interesting exercise, so Rick and I, um, the, the first thing I guess I would reiterate is that oftentimes Rick and I are in, um, staff meetings together, village board meetings, um, even planning commission meetings where we're both present. But that's really us working through the process of figuring out how we're willing to balance, um, the, the bench and the teamwork that we have in this, uh, client relationship. And we don't go both of our time, uh, when we do that, and it, it probably won't last very long, but until it does, we, we split our time, uh, so that the village is not paying, uh, double fees. Uh, but then, it was an interesting project- Uh, but then it was an interesting project for us, or a process for us to just sort of think about what we've done in the last six months or so. Um, we've had iconic, over three discrete projects that we've worked on, some were pretty substantial. Uh, the New York School District, uh, uh, developer agreement was a big one. We've had three new development agreements signed, a three development agreement signed and moved forward. Up to this, leftover contract work from last year, uh, revising forms or notices. And the splash pad was, was a surprising amount of work or time spent, um, for a very positive, hopefully continuing positive outcome. And we have quite a few things upcoming, but we, we feel as if we have really made it through, uh, catching the village up with, uh, all the work that was sort of on the plate. And we think the second half of twenty twenty is going to be significantly less busy from our perspective in terms of what we're bill, uh, than the first half was. Uh, we have, um, five, well, I'll, I'll let Rick jump in and talk about, uh, municipal prosecution because he handles that, um, primarily. And, um, and after that, I'll, I'd be happy to answer any questions and, uh, and, and engage in any, any discussion you want to have about our service.
Yeah, so just a quick update on the prosecutions. I, I think we've had about sixty cases come our way. Uh, obviously, the COVID nineteen situation may have affected some of the cases that we've seen in the last four months. Um, I think we have about five trials that we need to get scheduled at this point in time, but with operations currently suspended, that's not gonna be happening for the foreseeable future, but, um, you know, that's one thing that we're trying to get going is prosecuting these matters and, um, you know, trying not to let them build up, but as far as the prosecutions go, it, it seems like it's been fairly typical, except for the last couple of months with coronavirus, I think we probably saw a decrease in cases, but uh, about sixty tickets of our defendants that we've had to deal with since we took over in January.
Thanks, Larry and Rick. Any questions for, for either of them, or, uh, I just make a general overco- overall comment? Yeah, certainly in my dealings with both Rick and Larry, um, have been very productive, positive, professional. Um, and it's been very nice to, to engage Stafford in our efforts. Um, certainly with just cleaning things up and getting this moving forward, as well as, um, just looking at, at future and I suspect we, I will correct Larry maybe a little bit. I'm hoping that that we are as, hopefully as busy, uh, in the second half with some, some development stuff coming, but we'll see, it's, it's a, not, uh, we're, we're doing a little normal. Um, but there are certainly some bright spots here or there, I think, that will keep you guys busy, I hope. So with that, I will turn it over to any board members for questions or comments.
I think it's been great. I have nothing, um, I have only positive things. I think John's said most of them, but I appreciate working with you guys, so thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Uh, I, I, I guess I'd like to concur to that as well. I appreciate the promptness in getting this stuff back to us, back to developers, back to parties involved, um, doing all other things that go along with business, such as billings and all that, back to us in a timely fashion. Um, it, it's, it's, it's a great change. Thank you.
All right, you guys are getting off easy. But that's again to my earlier comment.
Uh, we will, Larry, the, the last, the last request I would make then is that, uh, you know, like, sometimes people are as comfortable raising issues as they arise in a public meeting like this, but everyone should obviously feel very comfortable reaching out and providing us with any kind of constructive input, uh, that'll help us to serve the village in a better way, we'll be very receptive to that.
All right. Thank you, Larry, for that. Uh, and again, uh, as I started to allude to, this is, uh, Larry and Rick volunteered to go first, kind of in our review of outside services that we utilize. We'll be doing this for, for all services that the village engages in, professional services at least, um, going forward, so on an annual basis, and Matt, uh, certainly can comment on this, but, um, we've had multiple discussions about how we wanna handle that, given the opportunity for the sharing to go on. Um, as Larry alluded to, any constructive feedback that hasn't already been computed, com- communicated, has been, been shared. Um, you know, lessons learned along the way, and I think, uh, that just make it better for, uh, all involved and make them more positive, uh, going forward for, for all, you know, those folks.
Yeah, we'd be looking to, um, handle the others during various meetings in September and October, and then, um, I discussed with Larry, um, they, they may go again in January, just so they have, um, that would be their annual, and then they would get, kind of get back into the process of, um, September, October timeframe with everyone else, um, as we go forward, so. Um, they might get to go twice this first time along. Um, and then just, uh, from a staff perspective, I can, uh, um, I, I, I've all heard only, only positives from staff. And, um, I'm personally very satisfied with the services that Larry and Rick and, and Stafford as a firm provide. And we, we've, they, they've been very sensitive to, towards the, the village budget, and, um, you know, there's a recognition, and I, I, I think, um, the board realizes this too, that you know, this was a, a big undertaking and there was a lot of catch-ups, so, you know, this, this particular year, um, budget-wise for the line item of, of, uh, legal services is gonna, is gonna be high, but, um, you know, going forward, I think we'll be able to stabilize that and get that into, um, you, you know, in line with what, what we set going forward. So this is just kind of an isolated year and, and a lot going on, so. That's all I have.
All right. All right, then we, um, move on then to item E is discussing, consider block party. Application from Deborah Trzynski, or I'm probably butchering that, I'm sure Becker. Um, Maria Lane, uh, there was the application in our packet, uh, with some, uh, little bit of detail regarding that.
John, I'll just comment that I did hear back from all of the departments and nobody had any issues with it.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Any comments from board members, members or questions?
She got enough signatures, right, from her block?
There were quite a few on there, I don't know what the requirement is.
Block probably isn't real long. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the block party for Deborah Trzynski Becker on July eighteenth from one to nine P M, uh, year twenty twenty.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion second then. Uh, any further discussion?
I have a, I have a question. This is, uh, um, are we, I'm a little confused what we're approving. Are we approving them to have a block party, or are we approving them to, to literally just block the street? Just close, cause it looks like the title of the application is for a block party, but then it seems like, then in parentheses it says street closing, so I just, I guess my, the purpose of my question is, do we need to put anything in there that they maintain the, um, the order, the Dane County Pub, Madison Public Health, um, order for outdoor gatherings? Or is that not part of what we're approving, and we're just approving street closures, and then they are on their own for, we don't really have any say in if they follow the order or not?
Lisa?
Um, I am going to say, and JJ, hopefully you can correct me if I'm wrong, that I believe that it is for the street closure, and then if they were doing any sound, um, that would be another, um, application that they would apply for. Um, but I, I had those same questions, Sarah, as, as this came through and, you know, at, as the form says, we send it out to all the departments, so I was, you know, waiting to hear if anybody else had any concerns, so. I will leave that to either legal or the police department if they have concerns.
We don't, I think we would do, oh, go ahead, Chief. Uh, we don't have any concerns. That's, they're blocking off, and it's only till nine o'clock. It's, it gets dark at nine o'clock, and it's on a very lightly traveled road. And as far as any COVID restrictions, that's up to them to do it for themselves. I mean, we wouldn't get involved if they were in their yard doing this. So we have no problem with it.
Rick or Larry, you were gonna say something?
Uh, the, the, the question, I guess, from my perspective is, is it appropriate for the board to weigh in on that question? I think that it is. I think that the board can, can speak as a, as a body on anything like this it chooses to, so, you know, if you wanted to condition this, especially in this, uh, these delicate times, if, uh, uh, if you wanted, if you wanted to condition this approval on, uh, the group following that order, um, there would be no problem with that.
Um, so we could amend the motion to include something about the outdoor gathering order? Is the, is the limit for, it was changed recently, limit for outdoor gatherings, was it?
Yeah, it's, um, permitted with twenty-five individuals or fewer, and then, um, ma- must maintain physical distancing.
And, and how, and how does that work with a, an entire block? I'm just curious. That's.
I have no idea.
One thing to keep in mind too is that, you know, you might go past a, a gathering like this, and it might appear to you that people aren't following us, but they might be five, six people from a single household.
Yeah.
That are not required to keep that distance. And so it's, it, it, I, I think it is, is, as the chief said, it's up to them to, to follow the rules, but it certainly doesn't hurt to reinforce that if that's the rule of the board. Uh, twenty-five people, uh, a block, it can be, a lot of people having gatherings, say six feet apart. I think most all of us are doing that at ti- at some time, and that's just the reality of a block party, all this order's in effect. That's required, and that's what they have to do.
I mean, I almost wonder if the point of them having a block party is so they can maintain distancing rather than gather in someone's yard, but that's just me hypothetically thinking of situations here, but twenty, I mean, uh, who has any suggested language, or can we limit it to twenty?
Can we just say, you know, we approve it, um, and, and ask that they follow the, um, Dane County Public Health, fit, um, what do they call it, uh, order? Cause I don't know what it will be on July twenty-sixth, right? They could change it, so could we just say something like, and that they, they do their best to adhere to whatever the current Dane County Public Health gathering order is? Or something to that effect?
Would the town recommend, maybe?
Sure.
Okay, so if we amend the motion to approve the block party with the recommendation that they follow the Dane County outdoor gathering guidelines?
Yeah, for public health.
Effect at that time for public, for public health? Lisa, you have that? Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. As a second.
Uh, any other further discussion then? All right, then, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right, then we move on to, uh, uh, reports from village boards and commissions and committees, starting off with parks and wrecks and forestry. Heidi, do you wanna start us off there?
Sure, we met back on June eighteenth on Zoom, and we talked about a few things related to COVID that now are kind of, um, going to be changing. Um, we talked about music in the grove starting late July, but with the current uptick in cases, um, I was talking with Sean about postponing that start date, um, and then, uh, other updates are kind of around, um, the COVIDs. I'm not sure if, Sean, you wanna talk about that now, or if you wanna talk about it in your, um, update later about tax and rec during the COVID pandemic, or?
Um, I can do either. Uh, I'll just talk about it quickly now. We did decide we were gonna start music in the grove on July twenty-third, moving everything to Fireman's Park, allowing folks to socially distance, and that's just more real estate there for, for people to spread out, but, um, with the obvious uptick in, in cases and things, we're gonna postpone, we're gonna cancel the July twenty-third one, and we're still scheduled for, um, August sixth, which we will make a determination, uh, as we get a little bit closer to that and seeing how things are out there. So that's basically the music in the grove stuff.
Um, and then other programming, uh, we talked about uh, modification stud and continuing, um, virtual fitness, um, it was, it was a relatively brief meeting. Sean, did you have any other things you'd like to add?
No, we're, we're still hoping for, first of all, I guess, to be able to do some in-person programming, whether that be, uh, spacing out and doing some adult fitness and archery and things like that, um, that are, that are considered to be, um, in the median level, um, non-contact stuff, um, so we're hoping to be able to do that. Um, yeah, that's, we're just trying to, we're still remaining relatively relevant, um, virtually. Uh, we're still getting a lot of interaction on our Facebook stuff, uh, as, you know, it's nice out, so people don't tend to wanna engage a whole lot via, via, uh, virtually, but, uh, we are still getting some of that, so we're still, we're still happy with that.
Thanks, Sean. Um, our next meeting then is on the sixteenth.
John, Will, and Heidi, Will, um, that August first date and what comes back and what doesn't, will that be a discussion at the board, or is that something that you guys will decide at the staff level or at the park and rec level, committee level?
Well, we'll, we'll certainly discuss it at our next meeting, just to kind of see where things are at. Uh, but ultimately, I think, um, we may, you know, if things aren't changing, like it doesn't seem like they're gonna change a whole lot and into the positive direction between now and, um, next week, uh, well, I would be looking for board direction on, on, uh, doing in-person programming.
Thanks.
All right. Um, thanks, Heidi. So then we move on, and Sean, we'll move on then to the Grove EMS Commission. Troy, you wanna start this off, or?
Sure, sure. Um, we met, uh, go-to meeting virtually on June eighteenth. Um, calls are slightly down for the month compared to last year. Uh, we did discuss how we would tackle, uh, I'm shucking my paperwork here, uh, how we would tackle, uh, any sort of COVID-related expenses, recovering them from different municipalities, and agreed that it would only, wouldn't only include the, uh, municipalities that we service, uh, with ownership, but we would also do the contracted communities, so, um, the town of Deerville, town of Pleasant Springs, uh, divide that up by, uh, their population of the folks that we serve, and, uh, try to recover those funding, funds that way. Um, we also discussed, uh, some added cer- um, um, what do I call it? Uh, added, um, responsibilities for the medical director, uh, decided to, um, de- delay that, uh, do some more research and then bring. uh, do some more research and then bring that back up at the next meeting. Um, and the next meeting is on, um, July sixteenth, uh, a week from, uh, Thursday. Um, did I, did I miss anything at all? Um, Sarah?
No, you got it.
All right, all right. Any questions, anyone? All righty then.
Um, thanks Troy, thanks Sarah. So then we move on to, uh, law enforcement committee, I'll start off, and then Sarah, if you wanna jump in or Chief, uh, please feel free to do so. Uh, we met back on the twenty-third. Uh, we covered a number of updates, actually Chief, uh, went through a number of things from, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, to the, uh, case up in Minneapolis, to the adjustments that RPD made in the use of force policy. Um, uh, the racial incidences and status within Cottage Grove, a couple of those, um, are making their way through, um, uh, some charges, et cetera, and then some are just unidentified as far as, you know, one of the in- individuals. Uh, update on the vandalism issue with the attempted issue with one of our officers' personal cars in the municipal parking lot. Um, gave a brief update in the SRO contract, which was in front of the school district and they're, I think, still discussing that. Um, talked about recent property, properties and kind of the, how the process that goes there, um, that the department uses in trying to help landlords, um, deal with some, some trouble property and trouble, typically trouble, um, renters. And then Chief's report or went through the activity for March through June has been down, uh, just to COVID nineteen to reduce contract, contact between citizens and, and, uh, officers. Our budget's still looking okay and, uh, what we can control, we do have the union contract discussions coming up. Um, and that was that, and then, uh, future agenda, and one of the things we talked a little bit about is a, uh, research study that our department participated in around use of force, uh, that's available now. Um, there were a number of departments that eighty-one, I think Chief said eighty-one agencies, um, were involved in that, so we're gonna go through that, uh, at our next meeting on July twenty-eighth. Um, Sarah or Chief, did I miss anything? Trying to hit the highlights.
Oh, got it.
No, that's good. We did, you know, just on the use of force policy, the one thing we didn't have in there that I thought was important was the duty to intervene, so that's, that's in our policy now. Obviously, uh, federal and state law, you know, you can punish someone after the fact for not intervening for various things, but, uh, now it's explicit in our policy that you have to intervene if you're seeing something occur that, you know, obviously is gonna be harmful to the person and is not appropriate in that situation. So we did that right away after I looked at Minneapolis's use of force policy and then ours, uh, I thought it was important to get that in there.
All right.
I had a question.
Yes, Melissa.
For the SRO, is that paid for by the school district or is she paid for? Or is her kind?
Seventy?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's paid for by the school district seventy-five percent of it. We pay the other twenty-five percent cause she's not there three months out of the year.
Oh, okay. Um, I know the school board is gonna be talking about this at their meeting on July eighth.
Correct, and it seems like there's support to continue with it, so we'll see.
Thanks.
All right, um.
John, I did have one quick question about, um, racial incidents in town that there were some, so it sounds like there were some charges, but is that technically under investigation though, it's not, can we?
Uh, defer to Chief.
Yeah, um, we have sent our reports to the district attorney on one of the incidents, then we're awaiting a charging decision from the district attorney.
Okay.
That's all I can say because we don't have a decision yet.
Sure, okay. Thank you, Chief.
Good question. Uh, then, uh, moving on to joint, uh, review board, uh, this is just a, uh, all the base tax agreement districts that would go through with all the participating, uh, tax entities, so M A T C, Towne and Sun Prairie, uh, et cetera. Um, really, briefly, uh, all the materials were provided ahead of time, so really it's a, it's a matter of, you need those jurisdictions asking questions, and there really wasn't any, uh, to speak of, so, um, Deb, anything I missed?
Um. Nope, I don't think so.
Okay. Um, then, uh, we move on to the library planning committee, uh, Melissa?
Thanks, we met on July first, um, we discussed during by survey questions and, um, then tabled basically all of the other things, cause our discussion went for so long. And so our next meeting, we'll discuss them again on July thirteenth, and we'll have a presentation or a discussion with the Cottage Grove Elementary School librarian to help us understand the needs that he sees in our community and how a library here would help our students.
All right, any questions for Melissa? All right, we move on then to item nine, is reports from village officers, we'll start with Stanford, uh, either Larry or Rick. They were news both.
We covered everything already that we've got on our plate.
Okay, thank you Larry. For a second there, I didn't see it pop up there, so, um, thought you guys left us. So then we'll move on to COVID nineteen updates, Matt, uh, start with you.
Yes, um, a, a, a little bit of a change at Village Hall, we, we now have, um, a couple additional plexiglass stations at the front counter, um, the, a, a lot of customers still utilize the vestibule, especially if there's just one, mo- most of the time, we just have one person coming in. At Village Hall, it's pretty, pretty rare that we have more than one, unless it's during, uh, election or, um, tax payment season. But if we do have more than one, we have, uh, additional options now for people to come in at the front counter like, like normal. So just, uh, additional options at, at this point with, uh, plexiglass barriers now. But oth- other than that, it's, uh, e- everything continuing status quo from a general village, uh, operations perspective.
All right, thanks Matt. Uh, we'll move on then to Chief.
Uh, as far as COVID goes for us, is that what you're asking, John?
Yes, sorry, I should've said that.
Yeah, we're, we're back to, uh, operating normally as far as traffic stops. Officers are encouraged to make their normal amount of traffic stops, uh, and as far as COVID issues for the department, uh, the officers were tested on July first and I don't think we had any positives. Uh, well, I know we didn't, and we are continuing as usual for medical calls. We go in if it's an emergency or our assistance is requested with, with the proper equipment on. Otherwise, we do wait outside unless they actually call us in to help. And we'll continue doing that for a little while, yet I would assume.
All right, thanks Chief.
Got it. Sorry, I, I just was wondering, when traffic stops occurred, were, um, officers wearing masks?
They, they can, but you're also standing six feet apart most of the time anyways. Uh, we're finding that we're not able to talk to people with traffic going by and wearing a mask. We're still standing outside, they're still in their cars, so, uh, plus it's not coming over well on our body cameras as far as the audio goes, so it's problematic that way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to Lieutenant Wagner.
Um, well, as we all know, COVID is still, uh, pretty predominant in the Dane County area. Um, as, it's been mentioned before, the order has been amended, um, for restaurants and bars and outdoor activities. Um, that's already been discussed at this meeting, so no need to, uh, kick the dead horse. Um, the percentage today, um, was the first time in six days that the percentage went down. Now, right now, we're still seeing, um, eleven percent, uh, positives coming back from testing. Um, so we are a very far distant, uh, way of moving on to, uh, any other phase of, for Dane. Um, when it comes to Dane County, or excuse me, uh, same, or Public Health Madison, um, again, it's, it's all the same. I mean, Dane County is a hotspot right now. Uh, they're more worried about the age group from, uh, eighteen to twenty-nine, that's where they've been seeing the spike of COVID cases. Um, there, there is no mask mandate at this time, but they are suggesting, uh, or strongly suggesting that if you do go out in public, that, uh, everyone wear a mask just to protect, uh, everyone else, especially a, a lot of the percentage of the tests that they're getting at this point, uh, the individuals have been asymptomatic, so they don't even know that they have it or that they, um, haven't had any of the, uh, symptoms related to COVID at this time. So, uh, again, same as usual when it comes to wash your hands, wash your air, uh, wash your work areas, uh, keep everything sanitized, um, you know, six foot of distance and try to stay home if possible, uh, so we can kinda keep, uh, nip this in the bud sooner than later. But any specific data points or any specific areas that, um, board members want me to research or, um, ask Dane County Emergency Management or Public Health, uh, for Cottage Grove? Here, hang on?
Yes, guess not, I just appreciate the updates, uh, Matt, when you send them out, so when you get them, things like that, I think that's, that's beneficial for the board.
I, I guess one, one, I did think of one question, um, Matt, if you could, if you could ask for guidance for, i- if, if we do have an employee that becomes positive, um, and then time goes by and they get retested and they're negative, is, is that, i- is one negative test good or do you need multiple negative tests? Is, is there clarification on any of that?
Um, I don't think there's any, like, specific, uh, guidelines that, you know, that they have to be X, Y, and Z. I think that comes up to, uh, the governing body and how they want to handle it. Um, from what I've seen on other public agencies, um, and especially emergency services, is that they're requiring the individual to have, um, a negative test result and then, um, three consecutive days of no fever before they're allowed to return to work.
Okay.
As a. Quick answer, um, in working in healthcare, it's not standard procedure to have a second test done for somebody who's positive. So I don't think it's realistic for, uh, I mean, emergency workers and folks who are in that type of close contact, ha- requesting a second test a- and that it be negative, um, may be happening, but I don't think it's a reasonable expectation for any general employee of the village to, to require a negative test. I don't think that that is part of any of the procedures or protocols.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's just to add on this here, I think the, the majority of it is still that ten to fourteen days, um, of self-quarantine. Um, you know, that the, the symptoms have gone away, uh, three consecutive days of, of no fever, um, before they're allowed to, uh, come back to work. So, um, when it comes to first responders, um, all first responders, um, can get tested. Uh, they're having a mobile, uh, site right now, as, uh, Chief said, um, Deer Grove hosted a, uh, public safety, uh, testing event on July first, and, um, I believe that there's still eight more of those events that are gonna pop up throughout the entire county. Uh, so public and first responders are allowed to go there, uh, so they don't have to wait in, uh, you know, the real long lines, so. But the Lion Energy Center has been extended until August thirty-first at this point, and from what, um, I believe the county is saying that, uh, if need be, it may be extended even into September, if not October.
All right.
Um, I'm just, I, if I can ask you a question, I'm just curious if we have an employee of the village who's got a family member living at home that tests positive, how are we, how do we plan to handle that?
So, I mean, I don't know, I'll just throw in my two cents, but in general, Public Health will contact them as part, that, that family, and Public Health's recommendation is for that person to quarantine for fourteen days. So you would probably, uh, and my guess as a village is if the employees in a, a job that can still work from home remotely quarantined, they would continue to do so, and if they're an employee that can't work in quarantine, they would be off. Would be my, uh, thought process, but curious.
That's correct, Sarah, that, uh, we ask the employee to work with their department head, um, if it's the department head with myself and, and also to coordinate with, uh, Dane County Public Health.
And, and would we, would we have anybody that's worked in direct correlation with that individual, have them get tested as well, just as a precaution?
Only if that employee tested positive, so Public Health does the whole contact tracing. They would determine who has been in touch with a positive person for a long enough duration of time without a mask on to say you've been in contact, but even then, um, the, uh, the person can choose if they wanna go to Lion Energy Center and get tested, but it's not necessarily the recommendation if they're asymptomatic. So to take that one step further, if my sister has COVID and I work at the village and I'm told I need to quarantine, I would quarantine, but nobody else at work would quarantine, cause I haven't, I didn't test positive. So basically, public, I, my perspective is, Public Health does the contact tracing. They, um, will then share with whoever needs to be shared with that they need to quarantine. If you don't hear from Public Health that you need to quarantine, then just wear your mask.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, moving on then to JJ, good discussion.
Uh, absolutely, um, and that, all the discussions that go around here may well be, uh, coming to our departments, who we have, uh, uh, an employee who, we're kinda waiting for his results, but very much so, uh, had contact with him, confirmed positive. So, uh, I appreciate all this and I'll, I'll keep you all posted as we hear, but, uh, took the opportunity earlier last week to just reiterate to the guys that, uh, this is not going away. Don't get relaxed, one in the vehicle, sanitize before and after, maintain distance, so, uh, to recontinue.
And I think it's important to remember too that, um, rumor, or, you know, gossip spreads like wildfire probably through village just as easy as any other work environment, and I think it's just important to, to keep in mind that, um, this is, you know, folks' health, and unless contacted by Public Health specifically because somebody's been in the specific amount of contact with that staff person, it's really just important to keep it confidential as far, and it's hard to say, people are gonna jump to conclusions, right? They're out for two weeks, hmm. But just as a, it just as a, an added, a note, just of maintaining that, um, confidentiality.
Uh, Sarah, very, very good point, um, it, that is true, uh, we do need to maintain that. Um, Sean? Anything else you wanna share? I mean, you got an opportunity at, at, during, uh, parks and rec, but anything else related to COVID?
I'll be brief, um, yeah, we too had, uh, one of our, one of our folks that was third-hand, possibly exposed to COVID, um, just had a precaution, worked from home for the majority of last week, was tested and tested negative. So, um, yeah, it's, just seems to be getting closer and closer.
Okay. Um, then we will move on to communication, Melissa, is business, consider approval of vouchers? Any questions on the vouchers, comments, or emotions?
Oh, do we have, um, something about absentee voting before that, or?
Oh, I'm sorry. I stole the Lisa's thunder, um, sorry. I stole the Lisa's thunder. Um, sorry, I'll back that up. Uh, so item C, then update uh, from uh, Lisa regarding the recent court appeals decision on absentee voting and upcoming uh, August, August eleventh primary. Um, there is a memo in the packet related to that that Lisa put together for us. Um, so Lisa, you have anything?
Sure, so um, this was written on July second, um, that of course is outdated information already because it's election season and what, why not change it every day? Because that makes it fun. Um, so the court um, appeal is not in place um, as of yet. They're looking to have um, it mandated by July twenty-second. So, what that all means in short is um, anybody that wants to vote in person um, could, we have to put that in our type E notice. And with Larry's wise advice of putting in our notice by appointment um, is good advice because that's how we're going to leave it as by appointment. So if I'm contacted by somebody that wants to vote in person prior to that date, um, that's how we will handle it because it's just crazy times, um, crazy decisions that seem to change on a daily basis, so. Um, this information probably will become relevant again after or right around the twenty-second, but stay tuned and I'll keep you updated as things move along. Um, with that, um, the one other thing as in the min- uh, in the middle is that we have decided to use the doors like we did in April for August, um, just because of the current climate of increases, we feel that that's the best way to conduct the election in August, and as I reported earlier we're almost at twelve hundred absentee requests right now, so I can't imagine that we will have a, a huge amount of in-person voting on election day, but I still feel that it's, you know, tried and true practice. We did very well in April that we cannot um, do the same thing for August, and I think it's just for everybody's safety that we use those precautions, so. Um, open to any questions if you have any, um, again, like I said, I'll keep you updated as this thing unfolds.
Alright, any questions for Lisa, board members?
Do you think we'll need the National Guard again?
Um, that's a good question, um, I don't know that that's going to happen, I haven't heard any letterings anywhere. I think that if, you know, um, things become out of hand again, we certainly will, will ask for that. Um, it was very, very helpful in April, um, uh, Natalie did an excellent job. I do have um, more people that are asking to be coworkers, which we're not going to need as many being that we have the setup, but um, I think if, if that should, if something should unfold like it did in April, that that would probably be an option.
One, one thing that I would add quick to that is that, um, it's very important that if anybody, especially board members get contacted by members of the public asking questions about the election. It, no matter how recently, this is tomorrow, it could have changed from tonight, so. Please uh, direct them, you know, in, in an interest of being helpful, trying not to give them the wrong information, you know, in particular we didn't have challenges with registration, certainly, um, decades versus, um, versus anything that potentially changing day to day, so don't send somebody in the wrong direction out of a effort to try to be helpful.
Uh, Lisa, if people already got their absentee ballot in the mail, like, and they sent it back, the vote still counts, right?
Yes.
Or will count?
Yes, as long as it was completed correctly, meaning they signed it in their witnesses, but yes.
And um, has anybody? Don't say that. Um, has anybody voted in person for this election yet?
Yes, um, actually, I think the day before the order came through, um, I had somebody that recently moved and, and registered um, and voted in person.
And their vote counts too, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Everybody's votes count so far?
Well, as Larry said, as long as there's not another court case or changes.
Right, so far, good.
So far.
Okay, great, thanks. I appreciate this update.
Alright, um, any other questions for Lisa or Larry? Then we'll move on, uh, to consider uh, approval of vouchers, any questions regarding the vouchers? Or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, we got a first from Troy, is there a second?
A second, with Sarah.
Second from Sarah, alright. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Uh, correspondence, anything there from any board member? Uh, the only thing I had uh, that uh, we're reaching back to is a, um, a young person spent some effort on a flag design for, for the village. And so we're connecting the, them up to uh, the CDA uh, for consideration there because we have a whole effort around the area north of the interstate, so um, um, hats off to this young person, and uh, again, we're, we're working with him, that was the the one item that, that I recall right now in correspondence. Anything from anyone else? Or anything I might have forgotten? Otherwise, then we'll move up to upcoming community events. This was a past event, I'll just make a comment on last Friday's fireworks uh, that were held. For those that were, did get a chance to see them, they were, I think, very well, well done and wonderful, I don't think, I, I didn't hear of any any issues. Um, I did see an awful lot of traffic flowing into Cottage Grove though. Um, so I think with all the cancellations, uh, uh, a lot of people were yearning to see some fireworks, uh, over the Fourth of July holiday, so um, that's my only, only comment there.
John, if I can just jump in quick, did, I don't know if anybody got a chance to see Heidi's choreography of the music that was coming out of uh, her household, I'm, I'm a little concerned that she didn't get a sound amplification permit, but it was beautiful.
I didn't get to see that.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, I did get to watch all the uh, traffic activity, uh, uh, my back porch and I appreciate, I think there were two officers that helped uh, direct traffic because there was flashing red light, with flashing yellow lights. This was after a certain time, so uh, I think that really helps things move on faster, so thank you.
Any upcoming community events that any board members can, or, or staff aware of? Alright, then we'll move on to future agenda items. Um, we did talk about priorities and having those uh, kind of blocked out, starting with uh, diversity inclusion. Uh, and I expect we'll have, certainly we have planned commission items. We have a public meeting coming up, um, prior to our next village board meeting regarding the comprehensive plan. Um, Matt, Aaron, or others, I'm sure I'm missing other things.
I, I think we'll have Baker Tilly on the call uh, to review the twenty-nineteen audit. Um, that normally happens usually in June, um, just, it was delayed a little bit this year, so. Um, but they have that wrapped up and, and should be, should be ready for the twentieth, the board meeting on the twentieth.
Okay. Any uh, agenda items that board members can think of? Alright, then we'll move on to item eleven, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a first, is there a second?
Second, Sarah.
Alright, this one's not available, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everybody, have a-